Not by much.
We will have a doom pact if you go from 59 to 50% right off the bat.
Absolutely.
So let's do this, let's go through, we'll do the thing, let's see what we got. I read it based on this original and I just got the curve ball, but we have some changes, so let's go through them.
But to your point, Ed, before you get too far down the path, if the end result is going to be the same, or pretty much the same, what's the, what's the negative to doing it? Why can't we look at the old methodology? And I recognize that we went from 59 to 50, and that's been in fact, all ships will rise based on that change, but I'd just like to see.
Well, there has to be a value in adopting a new methodology, and we all have to be on the same page with that. If you're using two calculations and both of them equal the same, there should, you know, either there is no preference because there's no difference.
And maybe.
Or, or there is a value in using one base calculations because either it's, fair and equitable or defendable, which is, I think, the big one for me, is we can be fair and equitable in a lot of ways, but what can we be defendable? In those areas. And I think we just need to be very clear on the shift to the new methodology. Here's the reason why we're doing this for today's benefit, tomorrow's benefit because of X, Y, and Z. Even though if we use both methodologies, they could be statistically, you know, close.
But I didn't hear anything that says the new methodology is either more or less favorable than the old.
It's just. Then that's what we don't articulate.
Okay, let's find out and see what you've got, and then reserve time to go back to the questions.
We'll do that. One of the things that I want to mention to remember, there are, there are two parts to the methodology. One is budgeting, the other part is how we calculate the assessments that we've been going through. That's the more important part because the budget is going to change every year and it won't. It could be different the next year. It all depends on the budget, where those elements go. And that is the time when you go through your budget and you're going through and going to decide what goes where and how much you're going to spend where it goes. Then the methodology itself and the benefits that we have measured, that we have determined that we're going to use as a measurement, we'll take that budget and allocate the assessments based on the benefit.
Or the methodology is fundamentally different from what we did in 2020. Forget the budget, just the methodology. Fundamentally different from what we did in 2020 versus what we did in 2024.
They are, they are different, yeah.
They're fundamentally different.
Absolutely.
And they should, they should yield a different result. And that's what I'd like to see.
Fundamentally different on primarily two accounts.
Whatever.
Admin, parks and rec. Correct. Was and roads are not that far off. No, and the, and the roads and the water management didn't change other than we added in the,
Right.
The common areas, right, the common flowways. That changed from $1,800 to $1,900, and I took that into account when I did the budget, so we knew the apples and apples. And the roads are different now.
Because what we're including.
Well, yeah, but remember, when we talked initially about all of this, and we talked about the roads, it was initially, hey, what is Pelican Reserve's impact on Gateway Roads? Well, there's Gateway Roads too, so we included that. And there were also trip generation factors that needed to be determined. And consequently, you know, we discovered that we have a trip generation for, age restricted communities, which is like 4.4 or something like that. Yeah, and then the single family is 9.5, and on the multi-family, regular multi-family is like 4.8 over on the gateway side. So you had that that we had to determine. And we also, remember how we wrestled with that, we wrestled with that, and I came up with the idea, let's do a, let's find a common ground. We did the per foot, linear foot assessment, it says here's how it's going to go. And that may change going forward too, because what happens ultimately in the future if Stony Brook, for instance, takes their roads all by themselves. Now they're outside of that, now the leveling factor is going to be the lowest of Gateway and the lowest of Pelican Reserve. At that point, what we do then is we determine everybody is, is equal on that equalization part. And then the higher amount for Pelican Reserve goes to Pelican Reserve, and the residual for Gateway goes to Gateway. So anyway, I'm going to tell you, turn our phones off, let's turn mine off. Anyway.
And I was okay with that explanation, but the fly in the ointment for me was, the old system, tree line to Pelican Reserve was within the Pelican budget. And under this new adoption, the tree line to Pelican Reserve Boulevard is in the gateway. With a fundamental shift.
It is a fundamental shift.
On the roadway, which also impacts, you know, landscaping, which gets us back to the fundamental thing, there's a lot of variables here. And that's why I'd like to see the budget, if we hadn't changed a single thing except parks, and the, and the revocation of rule six, what, what number does that come to?
Remember, when you had the old methodology, and you said C5, and, and the commercial was a part of that, correct? The only part that they were a part of, Pelican Reserve, was water management. And also they got the small portion of admin that was outside of the gate. Those are the only two elements. And we had discussed that yesterday when I was talking about, what is that difference? When it comes to a dollar or eighty or something, it was not, but let me, let me bear it. Because what I'm, what I'm saying is that we, we didn't, when I did this methodology, it still includes C5 and, and the commercial within the water management side. The only thing that is, is taken out, and it can be changed, and we can discuss that, is what happens on the, on the outside in terms of the landscape.
That's the portion that I would like to see, if we hadn't changed any. We did 2020's methodology, we're 2020. One of the numbers.
And are you, and are you looking to validate if there were any differences?
I would like to understand.
Because it's going to be additional work.
Oh, yeah.
Well, now it's.
That's why he's here.
We got the formula set, he just changes the variables and it cranks out a number all by itself.
Well, it's easier said than done.
Well, I know.
Because we would like.
But that's exactly what I'm asking.
Yes, you are. But remember, too, in the back, in this one, we showed the new assessment and the old assessment and the variance. And the old assessment is the old one. The old methodology, because that was last year's assessment.
No, no, when you're saying the old methodology, that's the old bills. That's what we paid last year.
Correct.
Okay, that's not.
Must go capital using the.
Old methodology.
Right, the legacy methodology.
It's technically the current methodology.
Correct.
Not going to change.
Correct, you're correct.
Okay, but what we're trying to do is adopt a methodology that is fair, defendable, all those things. If that was fair and defendable in 2020, we should at least be able to look at that methodology again now and compare it to this, to see which is fairer, which is more dependable, which is defendable in port.
Yeah, I have no problem with the change. I don't know if I want to change it, but I understand the change. What I want to see is, if we had changed it, then what wasn't.
Right.
Well, let's get, let's go through what we've made changes, so I'm off to speed because you're obviously, you've seen something that I haven't seen yet. This new version. Well, I looked at the numbers yesterday, but yes, you're right. But that has nothing to do with the fundamental premise of what I'm trying to get.
Yeah, the fundamental part hasn't changed from what we went through with, with the, what was actually sent to you. The only thing changed was the admin in the back, because we had to, the, the main part of that admin in the back was when we were going through the budget, there was a portion that was missing for Pelican Reserve, and that was the security. And the, so it was almost $500,000 worth of stuff.
The thing I would argue is that while what was done in 2020 was water over the dam. In my opinion, it was challengeable, because the way it was done in Gateway versus the way it was done in Pelican is totally different. Totally different.
Right, but now that, now that.
Now we have it all under one deal, so that would be the, the thing I would have argumentative against the original 2020. What should have done is what the groups or classifications that we had in Gateway in 2020 should have been applied in Pelican, instead of lumping it all into one.
Right.
That's the only. The biggest difference, the biggest difference that I see, I think, except for that, a little bit, is that in 2020 we didn't have parks. And now we've come to a reconciliation of a participation in parks. Admin's the same. But with the exception of water management, everything else in 2020 on the Pelican Reserve side was lumped under these, plain category admin.
Oh, yeah, it was inside the gate.
Yeah, and inside outside.
Yeah, there was no, there was no determining measures. Okay, anyway, that's good that we're talking about the principle of the whole. That's important. Okay, let's start with the, with the, go on down. It's the four parts, and I really, you know, we can kind of really go through this stuff fast because we did all of this already until you get back to the admin portion. So we do the roadway, water management, parks and rec, administration, and then the calculation of the assessment, so go to the next slide. And again, this is all roads, this, roads didn't change, it was just based on what we, what we decided to do, and how we did the base of, of everything, based on the lowest linear foot, and then everything was put back into the, into the, between Gateway and Pelican Reserve, what they had in their budgets for roads got put back into there. So the only.
The sole exception that's under admin now, it's all the admins lost. All right. Fourth, that's one, administrative. Under the methodology we're looking at today, there is a change in that all the admins now alone versus.
There's, but there's two parts to.
Part one and part two.
I, no, no, no. Let me explain it so you understand. What we did is we took all the salaries and wages from the silos and put them into admin. So if you look to Pelican Reserve, you'll see there's a separate category for Pelican Reserve, for Pelican Reserve admin specifically. And that's your security, roving security, and all of the things that are affiliated with that. Your salaries and wages that were in there went back over to admin. That's where I'm talking about the calculation, the fact that if you were to put it back, you'd be paying eight dollars more. So that was the exercise you were asking about, what happens if we put it back in the silos? I didn't determine that specifically for all the products of Gateway, because I would have to go back and put them into each of the silos and, and figure out, but on average, you know, they're, they're going to drop probably a single, they're probably going to drop eight dollars of units.
Flat the impact of landscaping being underrided, I've got that. I've got nauseam.
Yeah.
I want to keep that separate, but just trying to highlight the differences, what we're looking at right now.
Yeah, and the, and the other part is C5 and commercial now, because they have road, or they have, they have a road.
They assess those costs before, now we've covered them.
And, and they didn't have an administrative assessment, they had a small one, because it was the, whatever the percentage was, 15% that was attributed to the outside, which was landscaping.
And I understand we'll see that further on, and it's for C5 particularly, it's quite a change.
Yes, it is.
But that doesn't mean we couldn't have done that using the old methodology and recognizing it could have been done in 2020, having regular. See it here with no complaints.
Okay, next one. Roadway, go ahead. Next one. Excellent. Okay, and again, excellent. We just talked about the roads and what the differentiation is, those were the roads and the linear feet that we measured from, next slide. And those were the roadway measurements. Remember, we have an engineer's report that's backing all of these numbers, so that's where they were taken from. Wasn't, I mean, they didn't come out of the loop, we did have mentioned, next slide. And this one, this is where we talked about.
Wait, 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 wait. Back off the base of it. Just for clarification. The CDD owned orange, no problem. The arterial roads, you have CDD owned, the green roads, no problem. The Lee County owned, here's where tree line used to be in Pelican. Correct, the 3,989.
Yeah, for the landscaping.
So that's, again, for full understanding of what's different between what I'm asking and what we have. Okay, keep going. There is a difference there.
And it was, it was founded toward an outside the gate assessment. So here what we did is we talked about, I took the gateway roads budget, the gateway landscaping budget, that was attributed to the roads, did the same thing at Pelican Reserve, but the roads, what the landscaping were specifically, and is measuring, using the, these are on a per linear foot basis, and then Stony Brook, and Stony Brook was the basis that we had talked about before. So the baseline budget, if you use the Stony Brook road, or the $1.98 for roads, and you use the $7.53 for landscaping, you multiply it by the linear foot, gateway's total comes out to 85,273 of their total budget is the baseline budget. Pelican Reserve, 168, 130, that's the baseline budget. Stony Brook, because of the baseline budget, it's their total budget. So it comes out to $945,000 of everybody's landscape budget is the baseline. So that's, that's how we came to that. If you go to the next slide. And, and then we did it on, on the, the original, or the baseline budget was based on trips. So, so what we did is I added up all the trips that were gateway, all the trips that were Pelican Reserve. And, and that included commercial, golf course, all of those trips, they were all added together. And then we did, what was that percentage? So gateway, gateway's going to have a little bit more. Well, you can see here, in the baseline budget, what we did is we kept the baseline budget in there for gateway, and we kept Pelican Reserve and for Stony. Those were baseline. Then I took the original budget. If you can see what it was, it was 629, 1.5, a million five for gateway, and I subtracted the baseline budget. And then we had a variance, the variance for gateway was a million seven, and for Pelican Reserve, it was a million dollars. I took those back into, specifically into the gateway and the Pelican Reserve. So when you look at the gateway allocation on the, on the per unit basis, on the trips, you see the single family, now C5 is included in there. They're at 235.27, just like a single family at gateway, it's all the same. Multi-family is 120, you go on down the line, because you can, now those allocations per units will show up, will show up in the, when I get to the, final roadway assessments, and see how it goes there. Switch to the next page. This one, it's the same one at the top, but this is the Pelican Reserve allocation, where the 958 and the 85, that's the overage. And it gets allocated on a per, per unit basis, so it's 383.74. And the 85, 253 was golf course, length of the golf course. So if you go to the next page.
And plus and back and forth before you get to the next page. Looking at nine in terms of total. Nine now has the grand one now, has the gateway golf course, I mean, has the C5 and the Pelican Reserve commercial.
Correct.
They could have just as easily been in Pelican Reserve allocation, but they're not.
No.
If we'd have done it under the old method.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not an accurate benefit.
Yeah, it's not accurate. If you intended to do the old method, you would be at the 0.4, 4.8 instead of 8.5 or 9.53.
Right.
But it's pretty different. Under the new trip generation of accounting for you guys as a 55 and folder, you're looking at basically a 50% reduction in costs that were not called for in the original. But it could be, as you crank out the, the categories on page 10, Pelican Reserve trips, Pelican Reserve golf course trips, you could have had a category C5 and still accounted for the, the variable. And you could have had a category Pelican Reserve commercial and still accounted.
What Mr. Tinkle was saying is that we wouldn't have the 4.4 trips per unit in total. You would have went to the single family and the multi-family, because you had to account for C5 as a single thing. So your, your trip.
We're still accounting for it, it's just which, which pile of beans you put in it.
That's.
It could be different within that category.
But you're going to go, you're.
Well, that's part of what I heard.
Yeah, they would change them.
It doesn't matter, we're not using that anyway.
We're not using these.
Well, people are not, no, because that's what's actually going to my internal recording, the people online are hearing from the, from my.
Continue. Okay, go to number 11, page 11, please. So this is, this is how it all works out, and this is how you get your trips on a per unit basis. So gateway, single family, you know, their new, their new is 342, because you had the base allocation per unit. And then you also had the remaining unit allocation by area, add them together, that's the new roadway assessment. The old roadway assessment was $324, so they went up by $18. Gateway multi-family went down by 203. C5 trips went up by 342, because they, they didn't have any roadway assessment before, that's why they went up. The golf course went up a little bit for gateway, the Pelican, Pelican Reserve commercial, this stuff that's on Colonial, they went up by 213,000, because they didn't have any roadway assessment. But now they're being impacted and their trips are being counted. Gateway commercial went up by 39,000, Pelican Reserve trips went down by $61. And Pelican Reserve golf course went down by 13,000. And the reason for that is because in the past, it was all lumped into admin, there was no, you know, Pelican Reserve and, and the golf course were all basically playing the same, but there were differences in trip generation. Now I'm using the trip generation, the death, you went down and the golf course up, went down.
When the landscape, you don't see what's happening.
That's correct.
But it's roadway and land.
Correct.
Which again, separating, part of the little quirky things that I want to see, separate, keep going.
Okay, that's all I have for roads. At the moment, so you have an overview. Uh, water management, water management, the only thing that changed from your original report. I really didn't, I added a hundred and, or one thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars for the Pelican Reserve budget. And I lowered the Gateway budget by one thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. That's the one. So it really didn't change.
What page is that on, Russ?
Uh, that would be on, you go to page, starting on page seventeen. Is that where I showed where the, where who was paying for what? Then we went back in on, on the next page. We just talked about the water management acres and the percent of that allocation. So the reallocation for Gateway or Pelican Reserve, he's holding, was thirteen thousand, eighty-eighty. And they're currently paying twelve thousand. So your allocation was then thirteen thousand, eighty-eighty instead of twelve thousand. So it was eight, eighteen hundred and eighty dollars. And that was.
So Russ, refresh my memory about basin six, twelve thousand. I remember we talked about this, but I don't remember what the twelve thousand was about.
That was for maintenance of the flowway that's behind the wind dix.
That's what we pay.
That's what you pay. And then the other three flowways. And then the other two is what Gateway pays.
Everything in the town center.
And they also pay.
A moving wheel, everything, south and downtown goes, see, that's too soon.
And also Gateway goes pay for that, it was paying for that whole area nine.
Well, they were, now we're all.
Yeah, but and the difference is that you guys would twice the pay, three hundred dollars more, nineteen hundred.
I don't mind paying my share, it's still pissed me off. That Barbara Wood is, that's, the Conical Links isn't colonial.
That's, that's for another discussion. I don't know how you can do about it.
But let's put everything out here on the table. And I don't agree about thirty to eighty-hundred, if we're not going to charge everybody, why charge me?
Okay. Came out to sixty-three cents or something.
Not a little bit. Can I pay sixty-three cents? Move your mouth along.
Okay, go to page one, now that you know what the allocation was. And I showed this last time, we did it by neighborhoods. And, and in reality, what we did, and we started this in twenty twenty, um, we weighted average all of the single family and weighted average all of the multi-family. So we had one assessment for single family and one assessment for multi-family. And that's what it was done at Pelican Reserve. And, and also I did the same thing when I calculated Pelican Reserve's assessments. But that was just to give you an idea of the detail that we go into and then we roll it back up. So it does prove the benefit by. Go to the next.
And on page twenty, the Area One Residential, where is that?
That's a, that's a single family home that is in.
What that is, is that's a deal cut thirty-five years ago between David and Westinghouse News and Tony, what was, uh, what was his name? The engineer that worked for David, for, uh, Westinghouse that.
David Callow?
No, not David. Uh, anyway, he got.
Our banks?
Uh, no. This is the guy that got, uh, the property given to him over there at the back end, on like the thirteenth hole. It's that one piece block that's in Cypress Lakes, our, one of our subdivisions, but it was cut out. And it's always been called Area One Residential. It's one house.
So it's one house that pays much more than everybody else?
And I've talked to us about that. The issue is, is that in Gateway, that one house is treated like everybody else, all under fourteen hundred, that it's room and angle. And so they face the same. This one here separates it out as basically its own standalone piece property. And feel a little dear from that owner. I hear from him almost daily.
Anyway, they, anyway, and that, that's the only thing I have, at least I. Yep.
It was always. Soundly doing first, looking to connect to you.
Yeah.
Forest Banks. Is it Forest Banks? There it was.
No.
Okay.
I want to say, last name, yes, yes, listen. Yes, listen. You don't remember that name? Well, I don't eat out of sugar deal. They got a lot out the house.
Anyway.
And anyway.
Doesn't like sugar now.
Um, go two slides. And at Pelican Reserve, the same thing, there's fifteen hundred units, and it was based again on the, on the actually previous, impervious surface. The, the assessment's two forty-two, forty-eight, the single family, and then one forty-eight, fifty for all the multi-family. Because that's a weighted average of all the multi-family. And the reason we did that, and we started that back in two thousand twenty, was that it became really cumbersome to try and add up. Almost every place would have a different assessment. And from a, from the administrative standpoint, it was much easier to weight average among the single family and multi-family. And the trips are generated that way. So that was the main reason.
Rest of the, I bet you I've got twenty-two, it's a total, in the new one, it looks like it has a total.
That's correct.
But it appears to be the number, so.
That'll be eighty cent difference. This is where the eighty cent shows up. It's got a single family, it's Pelican. The current amount is two forty-two, forty-eight. The oldest amount was, uh, a little less than that, eighty cents later.
Yeah, it was two.
Two forty-one.
Forty-one, eighty-something, I think it was. It was a sixty-some cent difference.
Sixty-eight.
Exactly. But it's still totaled seven eighty-eight, seven eighty-seven, two ninety-six. That's, that's the period. That was the, that was the only change.
And you did this all the same because, what's the thought?
People online listening to. Did what all the same?
The one forty-eight fifties are all the same for all the commercials.
Correct.
Okay, because.
This is actually.
Everybody has an equal opportunity to use assets or what?
It was, it was more.
The philosophy behind that equality.
The, the bottom line of all things, because it's such a massive number of parcels that we have in Gateway. It would be administratively very difficult to send out the different types.
This is a Pelican.
I know, same, same, it's the same concept. We did the same thing at Gateway. If you looked at all the Gateway and all this, all those. Though, that's what, that's what Pelican Reserve would look like, but I averaged them out on this one. And I weighted averaging to make sure that it. Doesn't happen bad. Yeah, yes.
Could have had two categories. Could have had single family to that level. The same.
But it's all being, it's the same weight for each one.
Every, within work, yeah.
There's about one point zero in here.
It essentially, yes.
Okay, all the units, except for.
But, but I.
Golf Course and the Commerce.
Right, and remember, C5 and Commercial still a part of this. So that's why.
There's nothing there on that line.
At the bottom lines, you're talking about the seven eighty-seven, two ninety-six.
Okay.
That's just the total. That's taking the six fifty-six and adding the total Commercial, and I did, and C5 is a hundred eighty-three times one sixty-eight. And when you add that number, the Commercial number, and all of the residential and Golf Course up above, it comes to seven eighty-seven, which was your budget.
Certainly, we've said again, the six fifty-six. What makes seven, what's the math that makes seven eighty-seven?
The math is the six fifty-six.
Okay.
Plus the eight, eight thousand three hundred forty-four, plus the one eighty-three times one sixty.
Oh, one eighty-three times, so it would be clear, we would have that, it's what the total is then.
Then it would make seven eighty-seven.
Correct. Okay. That makes up the difference of seven eighty-seven.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, the only thing I didn't, and, and it's the same thing when you go up above. If you look at the single family, the one, one thousand five hundred twenty-six times two forty-two. And then one ten times one forty-eight, eighty-eight times one forty-eight, you add all those up and add the one forty-two, it comes out to six fifty-six.
And I basically have some questions. Why Pelican separated Sienna for Red, Savella for Donna? And, and we didn't do that in Gateway, but it's, we could have had two lines, one single family, one multi-family.
We did it in Gateway.
Yeah.
And, and somebody had asked me, says, why don't we do the same neighborhood? Well, this just gives you an idea. It's very simplistic to do the single family, multi-family on weighted averages. Okay. So on to the, um, Parks and Rec section. Next one, do you remember the Parks and Rec budget is located in GFO O one? Uh, variety of benefit measurements, alternatives were presented to the board. We called, we went through everybody with one and. And we had all of that long discussion about that. The board determined that the benefiting factors, maybe ones for all the Gateway residential parcels, excluding Argo. And since they do not have a direct connect to Gateway. And the board determined that all other parcels, including Argo, would be given a point one five benefiting measure factor compared to the one. For all the residential units in Gateway. So that, that factored out, you know. Everybody gets a benefit from every asset.
This is the X factor that we agreed.
Correct.
Yes.
Right.
The quote-unquote. And now our value to the.
And anonymity to. On that.
Okay, the banks mediated, okay?
Anyway, on to the next one, please. Next, uh, yeah. Oh, wait a minute, you went ahead. Sorry, go back. Oh, there you are. Okay, I'll adjust for that. Um, this, this is how it all works out. Bottom line for the, for the, uh, million two on the Parks and Rec budget, which also included the, you cut the salaries and wages on that one. That's correct. And, but everything else was the same, the million two oh five, and then if you allocated it out, it came out to two twenty-six. Two hundred and twenty-six dollars and nine cents for single family, and everybody else was thirty-three dollars and ninety-one cents for your assessment. That, okay, so that was the change. Next is the administration. And, and, uh, we talked about the general fund. I mean, I put it back in here. We already agreed what we were going to do with that. We went to the fifty, fifty percent, fifty percent situation. And we, we went through all of those scenarios, and the board selected the, uh, deduct the enterprise fund allocation of the fifty-fifty. Yeah, so.
Uh, of course, you're Chelsea owners, not about the others. Is the biggest difference in the utilities going from fifty-nine to fifty? Not a reduction in staff. But rather a reflection of how the other areas have grown.
It's both, it's both. So we've had an increase in utility staff. We've had an increase in public work staff, but our. How it was done in twenty twenty, to my understanding, was done by time sheets. Um, now we have, other than Laura, myself, our contracts manager, and I think Julie was the other one. Utility staff staying utilities. Before, they used to do public work stuff and vice versa. And now, other than the four of us.
It's cleaner. But it also reflects, I mean, we had a dramatic increase in staff.
Yes, in public works, yes, we have.
And, and that's what's, this is really kind of reflecting. It is on that, utilities got more efficient. It's just they're a smaller piece of the body.
Maybe they did.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, um, go to the next page, which is deduct, oh, I'm sorry. We deducted, so we, so you understand where the split came. And we had thirteen percent, twenty-nine percent was public works, and eighty percent was party. And those are the salaries and wages. Were put over into the.
We kept the Parks and Rec salaries. I just want to reiterate that. We kept the salaries of Parks and Rec folks. In Parks and Rec because of how you guys chose that X factor. So it's not, they are not in Admin.
Okay. Next page. Administration. The administrative budget, and, and I know when it was sent out, it, it looked awkward because we had. Particularly for Pelican Reserve, I mean, I mean, I bet there was like a real cheer that went up and then went off. It was a deduction of two hundred and some odd dollars in assessment. Well, there was something that was missing in that, and that is.
Page I'm seeing, twenty-nine is different than what I.
I handed you the new, the newest version.
Okay, thank you, Ben.
Not whole bunch. I'll get it for you later.
I guess I don't care if they own, I got the new one, thank you for that.
So this is where things start changing.
Yes. Yes, and, and, and the main change on this, as we, what I explained to you before the meeting, was the fact that. There was four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars missing in Pelican's budget and calculation. And that was, we took all the salaries and wages that we had in there. And we had salaries and wages, and then we had the, uh, security system. So all of that together was what you used to pay. So what we did is we took the salaries and wages. Them over to the administration side that everybody shares in. But I had to keep the security, the, the driving through security, all of that, the four hundred and ninety-five thousand. And that's probably in your staff that guards the gate.
They do, they do the gatehouse, the, uh, security contracts, repairs, the gatehouse, those types of things. So why did you put it in administration as opposed to putting it in roads? The gatehouse is there to, for, for road access.
For purposes of Pelican Preserve. It really doesn't matter. Because if, if you're still paying, because you're all paying the same trip generation in Pelican Preserve. Or a trip generation. No. And you're all, you're, you're all sharing in the, uh, uh, assessments the same way, with the exception of the Golf Course. They went up on, they actually went down because their admin, their administrative number went down.
But there's a different number that you multiplied for in the roads, and that was that number for the senior citizen threat factor.
And everybody.
As opposed to administration where everything is one point zero.
Correct, and everybody in Pelican Reserve got that same trip generation factor. It's the same sport, same formula, with the exception of the Golf Course. Which had a separate trip generation number based on the number of holes, which is the same thing we did at Gateway.
So what would happen if you did not put it in administration and put it in roads?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't change your assessment, sir. Be the same.
Exactly the same?
Should be, yeah.
Except for the differential of the Golf Course. That's, that's the only thing that's really in there.
But they're, they're getting twenty-seven there. Units of.
Essentially the same.
Yeah, essentially, it's, they're getting the same number of, let's say, where you were getting a one. When we did the administration, they're getting twenty-seven. Everybody else gets a one. And then the trip generation, it, if you added up all the trips, the percentage is going to be about the same.
Well, I think we will do the math on that, figure out if that's right or not.
Okay, okay. So the administration is O one, district staff recommended all the salaries and wages from roadways, water management, and not Parks and Rec. Um, Parks and Rec was left out in state of the year, but then we put it all under administration and removed from each of those silos. We also removed the admin costs that you had for salaries and wages and put that over there as well. It.
So you did do number two here. You did take the salaries from the silos and put them in Admin.
Correct. But when I did what you asked me to do.
Right. Which was put them back in the silos.
And I have, I have a slide that'll show that.
Okay.
I, I was waiting.
Coming in then.
It's a surprise. It's coming. Um, anyway. Well, the board determined that the, because we're wrapping it all up. The board determined that the benefiting factor should be one for all Gateway parcels, no matter what the use or location is, with the exception of the Golf Course. If you remember when we did the Golf Course, um, we, and we had discussed this back when we, we talked about Admin back on December the fifth. The fact that when we did trip generation, we determined to do that by holes. And in Gateway, we did it by holes before when we were doing Admin. But at Pelican Reserve, we were doing it on a per acre basis. So they had two hundred and some odd, uh, EAUs versus really should have been done by hole. So this gave us the opportunity, and we probably would have done this anyway, and would have brought it to the board this year. To make sure the two Golf Courses are being measured the same. We really would have done that anyway. But now that we're all one and a part of Gateway, we decided, let's, let's, and I know you and I have had that talk. For the last couple of years about that, about the Golf Course, and maybe they were being overcharged at that point. So what we went.
Well, what much maybe?
I get that. Bottom line was, we felt that it would be the best, and we discussed that back in the meeting, and we, let's do it on a per acre basis. So everybody would get a one, except Gateway, Golf Course would get eighteen, Pelican Reserve would get some seven. Just the numbers. So go to the next page. Well, so we took the administrative budget. And, and again, we're, that was everything added up minus the salaries and wages, with the exception of the Parks and Rec. And then you see the number of units we have. Um, and then, and you take that, and you, you use, everybody got a one, you use total, and you multiplied, or you divided. You divided the five thousand twenty-four by twenty-seven, or, or by, uh, seven hundred, seven thousand nine hundred and thirty. Comes out to sixty-three, thirty-five percent, goes to the Gateway parcels. To the Commercial parcels, it's two hundred, or it's two point three two percent of the total budget. And then for the Gateway Golf Course, it was point twenty, point two-three. Um, if you look at the Pelican Reserve, it's thirty-three percent. So see, we see, almost see that two third, one third ratio.
Okay, so the two six 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 is be the twenty-four ninety-eight plus the C5 units?
Included in some fact, because it really didn't matter in the calculation. I could have made them their own number. I just included them in, in Pelican Reserve.
We won't have inside and outside the gate anymore.
Correct.
You just included them in the residential for.
For Admin. Correct, and that's one of the questions that we will need to, to discuss a little bit today when we get past this, is what do we do about that? About the landscaping portion that's outside of the gate? Now, how much is it Pelican Reserve and how much it is everybody else? Because that, that stuff, the Pelican Reserve side of the. Because that, that stuff, the Pelican Reserve side of the budget would be maybe from this, the curb back to the wall on. Yeah, to the fat, off the fence of the wall, sorry. Um.
Sidewalk.
Yeah, it's the sidewalk, correct. Because you're not maintaining the sidewalk itself, if that makes sense. Um, then, and then, so that part would just be strictly Pelican Reserve. And we take what a part of that whole budget that's outside the gate for landscaping is that. And then the, the rest of it, everybody shares, everybody in Gateway would share it. It's where it would go. Because that, now, now, now that they're not a part of that landscape budget, that would go outside.
Well, if that's one of the things we wanted to decide.
Right, what I'm saying, because we, we discussed that.
We didn't agree, we discussed.
We discussed it, how the percentage of that prior mess. Yeah, yeah.
I like the.
You're paying for the whole thing. You, you would be paying for the whole thing? As opposed to that portion, anyway, bottom line. Um, that's how we came up to two hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty nine cents for that part. Now, uh, the other part, and, and before I get to the next slide, there was, there was a portion that was missing in the other version that was sent out. And that was, I was talking about the security, the, the security system and all of that. And that came out to be four hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. So when, when we were putting it all together, we put that back in, but that was only split inside the gate by, by everybody with a one and the golf course with twenty seven, is how we did that. So that's where that number came from. So, you know, everybody got a one and the golf course got twenty seven, based on the twenty seven. Okay? So let's go to the next slide. The, this is where we get to the, the bottom line of it all. The draft assessment calculations. Following tables show how the assessments for all the parcels in Gateway of Pelican Reserve, based on the three, uh, late fall workshops we had and board direction that was given at those workshops. Uh, note that the C five residential community on the west side of Tree Line and the Tree Line Commercial Properties at the Tree Line Colonial Intersection are included in the gateway calculations for roadways, parks and rec, and administrative assessments. And the C five residential community on the west side of Tree Line and the commercial ones are included in the Pelican Reserve calculations for water management, which we talked about before. Uh, then we intend to present a draft of the written report at the early, you know, once it's all agreed upon today, hopefully that, yes, let's go this direction, then I will write it up. Because then we have the tables and everything set to go. We turn the next page. This is where the Pelican Reserve Assessment Tables added up.
Before we leave, step forward. Going back to page thirty one. With the note of the two five residential and the note of this, uh, tree line. If we, what I think I keep asking for, is those two are a change between twenty twenty to twenty twenty four. And that's where I want to see what the numbers are. If we calculated it based on one twenty versus one twenty four per month. I would like to see.
Here, but here, here is the issue. There was no road costs in the twenty twenty.
Okay.
Or C five or.
Everything else is the same. If that road cost or lack of the road cost goes into the Pelican budget, what's, what's the overall of that?
From a benefit perspective, it doesn't work. They, why would they be a part of your road?
They were twenty twenty.
No, they weren't. They weren't charged.
They weren't charged, but they were still part of it.
No, they weren't, no, they weren't. They, they were a part of outside the gate. They weren't a part of.
Because I had an outside the gate number in a Pelican. Now, we failed to charge the people that were using it. I agree with that. So now we're going to charge it, but keep it in the inside, outside the gate Pelican. If it didn't go anywhere other than, under the Pelican bucket, which is what I'm asking. Now we're charging before we didn't. What does that do to Pelican? It could only, no, it can't hurt.
It's going to have that.
That's the, the thrust of this again.
But then, then it goes away from, um, from the gateway side.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Because we've run it, we maintained it. We're the ones that are there day in and day out doing everything.
From the landscaping side. What are you down on the road?
I call it everything, okay.
There, there's a difference, and that's why we did it this way.
And there's why you did it that way. I don't like that way. And what I'm asking for is to compare the two and see what impact it has. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, and this is what it's been a bit of. But I, what I say.
I understand you like, I would like to see it, but I don't know how I can defend it.
Well, I don't really like you have to defend it like, yeah, it's just not something for us to look at.
Well, that's, that's what Carol said earlier, is the reason she wants to see is because in her mind, it was fair and equitable and defendable. Russ is saying that the old methodology was not defendable. So if I know, and I understand, look, I'm very.
I'd be, I don't believe he said that.
No, he didn't say.
Well, he even said he.
It was defendable.
Thank you.
Okay.
It was defendable.
The old way was defendable?
Correct. And the new way is defendable.
Or you admitted it. Well, in the old way, we didn't charge it, and the new way we are charging.
So they're not benefiting from your.
Being charged.
They're not benefiting from, when, after we do the equalization of everybody, this is, everybody pays into that baseline. After that is done, this, the lump of the gateway roads going into gateway and the lump of Pelican Reserve roads are going into Pelican Reserve. They're not benefiting from your roads. They're not.
Only to the outside of gate portion.
But where in the budget doesn't show the outs, yeah, that's landscape. The landscaping, that's fine.
The landscaping, not that way, right?
I don't have that problem. We talked about that. I don't have that problem of, of, you want to separate that landscape? But if you recall, if you remember the dollar eighty three?
Dollar eighty three.
Yeah, remember we, we said, let's say it was a hundred thousand dollars for that budget and sixty, because that budget was spent, you know, taking care of your fence and all of that stuff and all the landscaping on that side. And then the forty percent on the other side, everybody benefits from. That's, and remember I kept running the numbers for you, said, well, it's going to come out to a dollar eighty three.
Let's go ahead.
So that's, that was the bottom line. I mean, if the landscaping, I can do that for you. That's what you want to see.
Please.
Go ahead. Okay, um, go back, or I'm going to go forward. We're only there, go back to Pelican Reserve. One of the things, so we could do, if you go across, yeah, the road, the water management, parks and rec, administration, the administration, you see, is two sixteen. The Pelican Reserve administrative assessment, as you can see, was four hundred and ninety six, five hundred. That came out to a hundred and ninety six dollars and seventy nine cents for your security system. Your inside the gate, you know, your gatehouse and all that stuff. And in order to compare apples to apples, when I ran.
So you put that into administration?
I call it the Pelican Reserve Administration, yes. Your administration.
The one ninety six, seventy nine.
Yes.
Is what you're saying, that's the essentially half a million dollars for the gatehouse.
Yes. Okay, yes. And then there's a budget variance adjustment. And what I need to explain on this is when I ran, I ran our assessments across and I ran everything up. I totaled it all up. We were short on the budget by seventy three thousand compared to last year's amount. So, for some reason, it came up different. I didn't get into the detail, detail. What I ended up doing, just so you understand, is the budget variance adjustment was done on a, a proportionate amount of the total that you had up to that point. So I split that, for instance, it came out to twenty seven and twenty five between single family and multifamily. And then the golf courses was six thousand. That was added to it, so it would come out, if you look at the variance over on the right at the bottom, it comes out to zero. So these, so this is, this is apples to apples. I had to put that in there to make them apples to apples. That's how this, this came out. And you can see also I had Tree Line and C five, but it was only the water management assessment at that point.
So you're saying there was seventy three thousand dollars that was budgeted this last year that somehow wasn't anywhere?
Wasn't picked up in.
In any of the silos.
There you go.
So you put it in administration?
No, what I did was I said, for instance, a single family, if you added up the total, let's, let's for simplistic purposes, say, single family was, you know, you're twenty nine times, yeah, thirty times, and say it was three hundred, three hundred thousand, or, I mean, as it turned out, I took total of the single family, the total amount, whatever that, whatever your assessment times the units came out to be. Multifamily did the same thing. And the golf course, I did the same thing. And I took those three totals and I made them as a percentage of a hundred percent. So I added them all up. The single family was X percent, multifamily was X percent, and the golf course was X percent. Then I took that seventy three and split it based on that. Yeah, it just, it was prorated. I mean, and again, the assessments aren't going to be exactly the same. Every year it's going to change because of the budget. It just is. So that's how I, so I could equalize it and you could truly compare apples to apples. That's the way that was done. So.
Go on.
Go on to the next one, which is the Gateway Assessment Table. Same thing there, roads, water management. Um, if you notice under the water management, C five and the Tree Line Commercial does not have any water management because it's, it's tallied in the Pelican Reserve side. Parks and Rec Assessment, two twenty six, single family and multifamily, they're paid the same. Thirty three ninety one for everybody else, including our group. At least the board decided that they did a point one five. Uh, administrative assessment, same thing, two sixteen, twenty nine. Golf courses, two sixteen times eighteen units. Gateway Commercial, um, is, they had a total that came out of that administrative assessment to one hundred and four. And then, uh, the Tree Line Commercial for administrative assessment was, um, two, two thousand five hundred and ninety five dollars. Then the budget variance adjustment for them was, the total came out to about thirty seven thousand difference. So I put that in the budget various, um, variance assessment and, and allocated proportionally based on the totals. Total assessment per unit, as you can see, it came out. Um, and then the twenty twenty four, twenty five assessment, and then what the variance is there. And then at the bottom, I put the Tree Line and the C five, and I added everything together, the roads, management, parks and rec, um, administration assessment, and the total assessment per unit. And then, um, and, and under the administration, I mean, so, and then, then there, what it was last year. And remember, because it's major, that is roads that, that they're paying for. So they're going up, the commercial's going to go up by a hundred forty one, split by all the commercial parcels, and the single family's going up by three fifty seven, which again was.
And they're going up because they got a break on roads in priority.
Correct.
Mitch, what do you need from us, uh, now, since we are trodden on ours? What do you need from us, uh, to proceed, uh, the final document at the February meeting?
Um.
What does he need from us to let him know to proceed with a final document? Final calculations and all that that we referred to earlier?
How can we do that until we get Carol on our desk?
I'm sorry?
How can he produce that until we get the, the comparison yet?
I'm, I'm trying to get the basis of the stuff that we've got right here. If those extras are going to be brought up as a motion to do that, that's a separate. But this is the base, as I understand it.
What, what I would say.
It was A base. It was A base. I would like to see the comparison.
Yeah.
It's a place to choose.
Here, here's what we can do. I can write it based on what this basis. I can write the report.
That's not right.
That can we do, yes. And then if, and I can run those additional couple of things that you were looking for, just to give you an idea, just like differences. And all that, you know, it's going to cost you eight dollars more if we moved everything over. It didn't, it was really not that one. So do we do that? Um, and, and not only that, I think the, the staff time's going to go up because it's an administrative nightmare for you to try and keep track of all that. That was the main reason for putting it all over. So, um, and then when we do the February.
Have we had an administrative nightmare for twenty five years?
No, we've had just for the fiscal year, so to start tracking everything.
Yeah, okay, but that's, that's a different thing.
No.
So again, what's, what is, do you need from us at this point, at least this base presentation of the various items, parks, water, road, and admin?
And the benefits, yeah.
Absolutely.
And, and the benefit measurements of all of it.
Yes, yeah. What, what do you need from us or what question do you want answered to be able to go ahead with that February, uh, presentation of this document?
Tony, you think just an approval of?
But, you know, we're, we're, we're can't do in workshop.
That's right.
So we get to the board meeting. Sorry, the board should say, suggest prepare the proposed formal filing document for the February meeting.
Can we have a final doc? Well, we, so, we're more of, we, we can.
Form up.
We get, we get two issues. We got the base issue here, and then we have what, for lack of a better term, I'll call, is an addendum. We can do that on, but this is the base.
It is an alternative.
But, the, 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 what I'm trying to find is, is on the basis of this, which we have agreed to, to this point, what do you need from us to answer to finalize this?
Well, as, as Tony said, wait till you get to the main, go ahead.
Yeah, what I was saying was that in February, when, following the same pattern and path that we did back in twenty twenties, is that based upon the actions taken by the board when we go into the regular board meeting, Russ prepared what's proposed by him to be the proposed final report with whatever other supplements he thinks is to address the comments, I need supervisors as the variations and differences. And then at that February meeting, the board would set the public hearing, not less than thirty days out from when the advertisement gets clicked. So it won't be sometime until March. And I'd suggest the second meeting in March in order to meet the thirty day advertising timeframe. Because we publish it in the newspaper that the board's proposing to adopt revised twenty twenty five assessment methodology. And so on to February sixth board meeting, the board can say, this is the document we want to advertise for a public hearing. And then when you get to the public hearing in March, the board can still make adjustments when they adopt as a resolution. He proposed the methodology to be utilized when the board adopts its budget in August, by August of twenty twenty five. At that time, the public will have another opportunity to comment because they will be getting their notices by mail and a big notice with a map in the newspaper like we did last time. Because of the variations, it's a new assessment methodology, and there might be increases in the assessment which require the full blown mailed notices and the notice in the newspaper. So that's.
Well, the issue I'm trying to get to, sustain on course of the long timeline we had. You preparing this document and the addendum or the change or the alternative or the stuff for that Bobby Carroll had talked about, is there any reason why both of those cannot be presented at that February meeting to where we get this issue resolved, that where we're going?
What I will present at the February meeting will be the written document based on my base. And then I will show you the alternatives. Go ahead. And then, and then with the, the written report, we can now say, well, listen, we're going to change this and change that at that meeting.
And that's what can be that approved for purpose of advertising a public hearing in March, if the board's so inclined. And we don't reach a consensus. If we don't reach a consensus in February, if that becomes a stumbling block, then things slide until we do reach agreement.
It, it will be a, it is, I see it right now, it's real simple. It's going to be an up or down vote, that we either go with the base or we go with the alternative or a modification or a.
Are you going to have a meeting?
It's not, they're just wanting to hand down the vote.
And you can counter that. This is what I. Needs to be, whether it's, who, whoever takes this on individually or together, there should be clear justification on why we would want to move forward with the new methodology uh, versus the old. So, I mean, Bobby Carroll, if you guys, uh, don't see.
I don't know.
If you don't see the value in, in the new methodology, if you're not on, on board with the philosophy that we don't want Gateway and we should be treated as such, and we will make concessions as, as part of the assessment, which I believe we've done, then I think you guys need to come to that meeting with, with your position on why the old methodology is better than the new.
No, I don't know.
Because you're behind. We can't just say, you know, Russ said that basically if you look at the numbers, the numbers are fairly close.
Well, if they are, then.
But that can't be the reason for, for, yeah.
But while we've done it, I can disagree. We don't know about it. It's something that's, we need at document, at the February meeting, that shows the two. And then we have a discussion on those pros, cons, and that's whatever. And then make a decision how we proceed.
Exactly. I understand we need to be prepared, be able to look at both methodologies. And there'd be pros and cons for each, if there are, uh, so we can make a vote. It does have to be unanimous, but we need at least.
I would like to think that we have an open mind, that it's not, this is it, that's it being, run with it. I want an open mind to, to look at the various, like pulling landscape back out again. We do that, it may change it, it may not change it, but I would like at least enough.
So when you get to the next meeting, there's mentioned the item at Carol's request that you'll be able to make that motion and provide guidance to Russ.
Yeah, I got hit myself. There were a lack of guidance right now, Russ, and what we.
I know what.
I, I think what Chelsea is saying, that the board can only take action in a very good meeting, not a work. We have discussions, we have ideas, Russ has a sense of, Russ is a student enough from all those years to understand various approaches and thought processes, but the formal action has to be to.
Benefit of the workshop is over with. We've done everything, we've got everything. We go to the next meeting and then we make the motions to do what is next.
Correct, yes, sir.
Well, and I think we want to have you lead into what is the philosophy behind? Not necessarily, is it eight dollars more or not eight, or eight dollars less? What is the philosophy behind, why do it this way as opposed to that?
You mean, like, why do we put the administrative costs all into admin?
Yes, sure.
Yeah, I believe, yeah, I, I believe that would be very helpful, provide the basis, the rationale. I think Russ has done it orally in his presentations.
When you see the written part.
Because the key is that not true, not appear, not, not be in fact, remitring to preachers. But it's, but it's a valid exercise of legislative discretion on the part of the board. That's what the product, Russ is preparing up.
And I think we.
Fair enough.
Like, Chelsea, can you also work on, uh, just a quick summary of why philosophically we have transitioned to this, to this methodology?
Well, I, I think along that line, Doug, the way I look at it is, let's take road, let's take water management, let's take park and rec, and let's take admin. Put those down beside each other before after.
If you do landscape, you do.
And have, well, they're, they're within that, but anyway, and go through.
Not to my point.
The pros and cons of each one of them.
Not to my point. I had another leg in the.
If you want to split landscape.
I do.
It's fine, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, you know, meaning it.
You're, you're very flexible in your.
Yes, uh, motion to adjourn the workshop.
Salute.
So second?
Yes.
Yeah.
All papers say aye?
Aye.
Let's, uh, hold for about, what, five minutes, and then start the next meeting.
So all of the papers that were changed were.